Good evening. I'd like to call to Order County Council's meeting for March 17th, 2021. If all please rise, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I would like to announce that we did have an executive session to discuss litigation just prior to this meeting. And the first agenda item calls for public comment, and as we have been doing for months and months now, we accept public comment either by email at publiccomment@co.dellaware.paa.us, or one can call in one's public comment to 610-891-4931. Please give your name and address, and we will read your public comments into the record. Public comment is reserved at the beginning of the meeting for those items that are on the agenda, and then at the end of the meeting for whatever might strike one's fancy. I will look to Mr. Martin to see if we have any public comments on any agenda items.
There are two items, two comments. One is from Margaret E. Kelly, President, Friends of the Delaware County Women's Commission. This relates to agenda item number seven. Friends of the Delaware County Women's Commission would like to add the following comment. As President of Friends of the Delaware County Women's Commission, I would like to send our heartfelt congratulations and sincere thanks to these five amazing women. We are grateful for your impactful contributions to our community, and look forward to watching those positive impacts reverberate into the future. The second comment relates to item number five, COVID vaccination update, and then segues into some unrelated matters. It is from Jean Miller, 746 West Rose Tree Road Media. Why is Delco still not rolling out a COVID-19 vaccine? Using Rite Aid, I scheduled mine in Jenkentown and my husband in Philly, and we will get the second dose at the same places. Chesco SPCA also accepted hundreds of animals lost in the Texas snowstorm, whereas Delco's animal rescue with millions in trust won't even take them locally. Is it me, or is Chester County more on the ball? That is the end of public comments, which at least partially relate to items on today's agenda.
All right. Thank you for that insightful comment. We'll turn to Dr. Taylor then for her, for some reading of motions.
Now, I'm for a motion for approval of minutes of the regular meeting of March 3, 2020.
Any questions or comments from council on the minutes? I think you seconded that, Mr. Madden, did you? Thank you. There's nothing further. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number five calls for a COVID vaccination update.
Hi. Good evening, council and Delaware County residents. Tonight, I wanted to begin with the recognition of the one-year anniversary of the COVID pandemic and Delaware County's agreement with Chester County Health Department to become the county's COVID Health Department with the permission of the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Since Delaware County does not yet have a health department, it was fortunate that our neighboring county had the ability to make the significant commitment for the health and safety of our residents. Chester County has provided and still provides contact tracing, case investigation, data collection, analysis, and support on COVID issues. The Chester County Health Department continues with interpretation of federal and state guidance and with recommendations for residents, schools, and businesses, including web access to documents and other information. Their phone center has helped thousands of Delco residents, especially in those early months when resources and helpful recommendations were needed. This is but a small sampling of so many of the things that we are grateful for Chester County Health Department's assistance in. And I personally can't imagine where we would be without them right now and without particularly the fearless leader Jean Franklin, who has really took on the tremendous load of having two counties over 1 million in population during one of the gorgeous pandemics in modern history. But now to the present day, and so I want to give you some updates on our current data. Percent positivity is 4.29%, with a four-week average of 5.09%. And our incident rate most recent week is at 103.75 per 100,000, with a four-week average of 109.79. As you can see from these numbers, we are on a downward trend, and we continue to be, which is really encouraging, especially at this one-year anniversary mark. We have received 7,000 doses of Moderna vaccine this week and 2,340 doses of Pfizer. Through yesterday, we have administered 5,941 doses of Pfizer, 9,276 doses of Moderna, and 5,338 second doses of Moderna in total. We have administered 15,216 first doses and 5,338 second doses. This is our total number of shots given is 20,554. We are operating five clinics across the county by appointment only. The Yaden Wellness Center, the Keystone First Wellness Center in Chester, the Aston Community Center, and the hospital partners Penn Medicine and Renner and Springfield Hospital. As more vaccine becomes available, we will be expanding our community outreach events. We will, we are still learning how vaccines will affect the spread of COVID-19. After you've been fully vaccinated against COVID-19, you should keep taking precautions in the public places like wearing a mask, staying six feet apart from others, and avoiding crowds, especially in poorly ventilated spaces. For the purposes of tonight, I just want to remind everyone that if you're fully vaccinated for COVID-19 more than two weeks after they have received the second dose in a two-dose regimen of Pfizer and Moderna, or more than two weeks after they have received a single-dose vaccine of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Now, I'm going to pass it on to Delaware County's medical advisor, Dr. O. Hen.
Thank you. I think you're on mute, ma'am.
I think this is it. Are we good? Can you hear me now? Great. All right. I just wanted to start with Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone, and thanks, Rose, for the update. And, you know, we all share the frustration of limited vaccine supply, but as the supply increases, we hope to address vaccine hesitancy, because this is remarkably a problem within our area, and we want to be sure that we can respond to any reservations expressed by the community. What we plan to do is underscore how the vaccine works, the size of the vaccine trials, and the diversity of the studied populations. We can relay, and I've heard many people express that the vaccine seemed to develop so quickly, you know, that it seemed to be too accelerated. But what we can underscore is a decade of research preceded the production. We plan to rebut misconceptions such as some people mistakenly think that the COVID-19 vaccine can give you COVID-19, but since the vaccine does not contain the novel virus, that's impossible. So we can begin with their misconception and really try to address these things. As we provide more information, we hope to spread enthusiasm about the vaccine among those who've been vaccinated and, you know, really try to kind of address the hesitation. Importantly, it's critical to emphasize that the vaccine is a tool along with masking, social distancing, and hand washing, and these things will all help control the spread of the virus and bring it into the pandemic. We need to make the public aware that vaccines have saved more lives than any other public health measure other than sanitation. So as we get the vaccine in, there'll be a percentage of the population that is still reserved about this, and over time, we're going to really work on ways to bring in that outlying population. But we're excited, and, you know, it's moving slowly, but it is moving along. So this is, this, we'll keep plugging at it, and with all the sites that we have up and the events that we have coming up, we're really going to make some strides.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I would, I'd just like to amplify and underscore Ms. Halt's thoughts about Chester County. And I want to add that Chester County literally saved thousands of lives in our county. And one of the ways they did that in the very beginning was they swooped right in, and they, they helped us with our most vulnerable and targeted populations in both the prison and in our long-term care facilities. And they guided them with, you know, this was something brand new that nobody had ever dealt with, and they helped all of those institutions handle this, do it professionally, do it right, and minimized so much of the damage that could have happened. So, you know, we are just eternally grateful to them. And, you know, moving forward, hopefully, we'll have our own health department, but you cannot underestimate how much they, how much good they did in our county.
Well said. Any other questions or comments from council? I will say sort of as a general matter that we continue to work with our state legislators, advocating for as much vaccine as possible to come to the county. We have advocated, we had a call with the Pennsylvania Department of Health today. Governor Wolf was put in the unfortunate position of being in a relatively small room with me and unable to get out of that room, so I certainly bent his ear a bit yesterday and asked for additional vaccine, as I did when I had a very brief moment to speak with President Biden on his visit yesterday. I did request a FEMA site here for Delaware County. So we have continued and will continue to work to try to get as much vaccine for Delaware County as is possible. And I know all the members on council are advocating strongly on behalf of our citizens, and I know our state delegation, both Republican and Democrat, are likewise working together to try to get as much vaccine here as we can. I know Ms. Halt and Dr. Mahoney have, have worked tirelessly along with Ed Klein and the whole Medical Reserve Corps to make sure that we are ready to distribute vaccine when we do get it. And I think we should, just as we sing the praises of Chester County's Health Department, which is much deserved, we also need to, I don't think we could sing the praises enough of the MRC and all the volunteers who work so often, every day of the week, all weekend, to make sure with no pay, to just try to, just out of the goodness of their heart, because they're good people and want to see Delaware County citizens be kept safe. So I will, I will offer my thanks on behalf of council, who I know often we will talk amongst ourselves and just marvel at the MRC and all that they do for us. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Owen. Thank you, Ms. Halt.
All right. Agenda item number six, motion for approval of resolution recognizing March as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
I have this one.
We have a second for the motion.
I will second it.
All right. Any questions or comments on this motion? And then perhaps we'll have Ms. Ruth, or I guess maybe we should read, read the resolution first before we vote on it, lest it have something in there we don't want.
Oh, no, I don't think it has anything in here we don't want. And I would just note that, you know, in years past, we would have people come up to the, to the building, but I can assure you that we will, we're going to make an effort to get out to some of the organizations who reached out to us to, to, to issue this resolution this year at a meeting when it's safe to do so, so that we can personally share it with them. But each March, Delaware County Council declares Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Month by recognizing the contributions of people with disabilities who are valued coworkers, family members, and friends in our Delaware County community, and also commends those in the community who ensure they can lead full and productive lives. Since this observance was started by President Ronald Reagan in 1987, a great deal of progress has been made. Working together, we've opened many doors, improving the lives of those living with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Today, people with intellectual disabilities are not only included in our public schools, they are now attending college programs and employed in a broader segment of the workforce. In the Delaware County Government Center and Courthouse Complex, we are proud of the members of our workforce who have intellectual disabilities, and we are inspired by their enthusiasm and dedication to their work each day. During the COVID-19 pandemic over the past year, those with intellectual disabilities and their loved ones, and those working in intellectual developmental disability systems have faced many challenges. Providers and their staff were tasked with helping to keep those with intellectual disabilities safe from the virus. They also assisted individuals suffering psychological trauma due to the loss of loved ones to the virus, closure of day services, lack of social activities, and lack of direct contact with their loved ones, resulting in isolation, depression, boredom, and behavioral issues, just like for the general population. Intellectual and developmental disability providers continue to obtain the necessary PPE, train everyone in new safety protocols, rearrange services to maintain the health and welfare of the people they serve, work with county and state officials to ensure that resources are being obtained and used effectively, perform remote wellness checks, provide advocacy for people and families, and arrange for remote activities and therapies to maintain mental health. Most notably, the direct care staff continue to work with individuals in their care despite the risk to themselves. They are true frontline heroes. We commend them for their dedication to our residents in need. We recommend the work being done by residential providers, in-home providers, and their direct care staff, providers performing remote services, supported employment providers, day service providers, advocacy organization, support coordinators, and the Office of Intellectual Developmental Disability Staff. They work to ensure that the well-being of our most vulnerable citizens is maintained and help them to lead healthy and meaningful lives. Delaware County Council is proud to declare March as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Any questions or comments from council? All those in favor of adopting this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you again, Ms. Ruth.
And item number seven, motion for approval of resolution recognizing the Delaware County Women's Commission's 2020-2021 Women's History Month winners.
Second.
I think we have a motion and a second, and could we ask Ms. Schaefer? I think you're on deck to read this resolution, please.
I am indeed. At our last council meeting, we officially declared March as National Women's History Month, a time we set aside to commemorate and encourage the study and observance and celebration of the vital role of women in American history. Each March, the Delaware County Women's Commission recognizes Women's History Month and honors women in our community. The theme of this year's National Women's History Month is Valiant Women of Vote. And the women selected to receive this year's awards have worked to embody the purpose of that theme in our community. Founded in 1985, the Delaware County Women's Commission serves as an advisory board to Delaware County Council on issues impacting women and girls in our, in our county. Appointed by county council, the intent of the 15-member commission is to broadly mirror the rich diversity of the county. The commission studies current issues faced by women and girls and seeks to foster solutions and serve as a catalyst for change. Today, we want to recognize five outstanding women for their work to empower women in Delaware County. The Women of Achievement Award is being awarded to Nicole Whitaker, a community leader and founder of the Delaware County African-American Project; to Mary Jo Hedley, chief clerk of the Delaware County Voter Registration Office, is being awarded for her commitment to freely and fairly administer elections; Joyce Ellis, a 30-year veteran of the League of Women Voters, who has worked at her local polling location for the past 20 years; the Women of Achievement Award Future Visionary Leader is being awarded to Alexis Jade Berlotti for her work with young residents of Delaware County and advocating for changes in the community; the Women of Achievement Hall of Fame recipient is being awarded to Stacy Smith for her commitment to her community as the first female mayor of Chester Heights. Congratulations to all of these extraordinary women. I also would like to read another comment that was sent into our public comment from Sukka Williams, who is the, one of the chairs of the Women's Commission. And she states, "On behalf of the Delaware County Women's Commission, congratulations to Stacy Smith, Nicole Whitaker, Mary Jo Hedley, Joyce Ellis, and Alexis Berlotti, our 2020 and 2021 Valiant Women of the Vote awardees. We wish to thank county council for their continued support of the women of Delaware County." That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Any questions or comments with regard to the adoption of this resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor of its adoption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Schaefer.
Agenda item number eight, motion for approval to accept grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in the amount of $272,951 for a term of January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2022 for Senior Victim Services Victim Witness Raza Grant, subject to solicitor's approval.
I will second.
Thank you. We have our esteemed District Attorney, Mr. Jack Stolz timer, with us here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. We're asking council to accept a grant. These are one of, this is one of two grants that we get from PCCD every year to fund the Office of Victim Services. We are hopefully going to be coming to council in the weeks to come and talk about some exciting plans to upgrade the management of that office. But for now, we would ask you to accept these funds. These are used, actually, these are federal funds drawn from PCCD through state agency that are used to reimburse the county for the cost of running the Office of Victim Services. So it's certainly in the county's best interest to accept this one.
I'd just like to add, I appreciate our district attorney's efforts in kind of overhauling the way in which the office is administering to this important part of what you do. And as always, I appreciate the efforts in bringing in funding for such things. So thank you, Jack.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Stolz timer? Hearing none. All those in favor of agenda item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number nine, motion for approval to accept grant in the amount of $77,000 for the height-intensity drug trafficking areas program for the term January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2022, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stolz timer is with us to present this as well.
Yes, sir. Once again, I'm in the enviable position of asking council to accept money to use to offset and reimburse the county for expenses. This funds come from HEITA. These are federal funds that are used to reimburse our county drug task force for its operations. I think I mentioned this yesterday. I would like to see that amount of money increase that we get from the feds, and so we're going to sharpen our pencils and get to work on it again next year. But for now, we would ask you to accept the $77,000 to help pay for our costs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on agenda item number nine? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Good night, Mr. Stolz timer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council.
Agenda item number 10, motion for approval of budgetary transfer of $85,000 from other subsidies category of the county budget of Register of Wills office to provide for four additional personnel per request of the Register of Wills. The requests positions are necessary to meet ongoing work requirements and to meet surge requirements related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and we have our Register of Wills, Ms. Rachel Ezellberry here, and also Mr. Lazar standing by.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. Wasn't sure if Mr. Lazarus was going to speak first or me, so I'll go ahead and get started. I'm requesting these resources to fund additional positions to meet an ongoing surge in demand for services. First, I'm going to discuss this increased demand. Second, I'm going to identify some existing revenue streams that more than support this modest request. And finally, I'm going to take this opportunity to explain my team's effort and success in meeting that demand so far. Since the time of my appointment one year ago in the middle of the shutdown, my office has experienced a significant increase in demand for services. I want to note that the members of our community that we have lost directly because and indirectly because of this pandemic are people. They are neighbors and friends and family members and are not just statistics. I know that, and everyone in my office knows that. But in order to contextualize the effect of this pandemic on my office, I must discuss the impact in quantitative terms. The three principal ways in which the workload in my office has drastically increased is first, a shift to an appointments-only model necessitated by health department guidelines. The second is the upcoming requirements relating to Real ID, which for many persons involve needing a certified copy of a marriage record, which is issued by my office. And finally, the sad and deeply unfortunate increase in mortality in our region directly impacts the services that my office provides. Statistics from the Chester County Coroner's Office indicate that the death rate in 2020 in our region was 70% higher than the average death rate of the previous 10 years. What that translates to in my office is a direct increase in the number of estates that need to be probated. Please understand that each probated estate triggers at least two years' worth of recording requirements. This also translates into an increase in the number of inheritance tax payments processed, the number of will contest filings before the register, the increased need for hearings before the register, an increase in the filings before the orphans court, particularly those that relate to end-of-life care, and all the attended phone calls, emails, inquiries, and questions that people have during this difficult time. Second, as I mentioned, I want to identify existing revenue streams that more than offset this very modest transfer or ask, whatever the appropriate verbiage is. The Register of Wills is a revenue generating office. I wrote over a million dollars' worth of checks to the county in January. These revenues can, of course, subsidize other various county initiatives, but I firmly believe that some of the increased revenues must be invested back into the office if we are to remain committed to good government. The increase in services I described a moment ago involves a corresponding increase in revenues to the county that should more than offset this modest transfer. Further, I expect additional revenues to the county will be generated by the improved processes we implemented last year. By way of one example, one that translates directly into a return on investment from the county's point of view, involves my office's transition to online prepayment. Historically, in my office, most monies were collected by check. Because we have transferred away from check collection and toward online prepayment, we, I estimate in 2020 alone, almost $70,000 of savings to the county in avoiding bounced checks and other monies that needed to be tracked down. Finally, I must draw counsel's and the public's attention to the incredible work that the team in my office has done over the past year. I found out, I think Friday midday, that I would be joining you tonight. And so while I'm here, I would love to sing the praises of my team. We had zero start-to-finish virtual processes in place at the time of my appointment, and we are now a model for other counties. I have literally had other registers call me and ask how Delco does what it does. In that one example, it was our process for marriage licenses. But basically, it's a testament to my team and the hard work of the people in this office that registers in other county call us up in Delco and ask how we do it. And the now open secret is that the hard work done in my office has been a bipartisan, over-the-top, exceptional effort by dedicated public servants who stepped up and made it happen. Every union employee in my office volunteered to do overtime last year to help, and the deputy leadership team in my office went above and beyond helping design and test these processes, thinking on their feet, meeting the surge in demand for services however we had to, and got very little credit for it during the time, during that time, during the grind, at least until now. You don't have to take it from me. I'd like to just briefly share with you some feedback about my team that I've received. To put this into context, this feedback is all To put this into context, this feedback is all just from the last three days. I just saved the ones that were coming in after I found out I'd be joining you tonight. So our friend Salvatore, yesterday at 4:15 PM contacted us. Trish, that's the chief deputy in my office, Trish, you're the best. It's individuals like yourself that go unrecognized and unappreciated that deserve a large amount of appreciation. I agree. Yesterday, Monday at 12:02 PM, an attorney named Nancy, please convey my compliments to the Register of Wills and her department staff for the procedures created to probate estates under the COVID restrictions. The department conducts the process professionally while also showing patience and concern for the families and individuals trying to navigate a legal proceeding during their time of grief. Monday, 11:14 AM, an attorney named Catherine, thank you so much for your help this morning. I'm very grateful for the smooth process. As I mentioned, this felt like a well-oiled machine. Tuesday at 8:09 AM, another attorney named Alicia, thanks so much for the explanation and the update. I am really impressed with what you, and when they say you, they mean the team, with what you have done with the website and improving online access to records. I look forward to more developments. And then finally, today at 12:25 PM, Doug from Springfield, Doug lost his mother last year in March 2020 during the COVID shutdown. And he reached out a year later, saying, I am deeply grateful for your, and when he says your, I assure you, he means the team, it's all of us, for your innovative thinking during our collective time of need. Your office should be commended for helping make the best of a terrible situation for which there was no plan. I do hope the worst is behind us and face-to-face operations can resume again soon. However, I am confident that if future shutdowns are required, your team will continue to excel at helping people when possible. I agree, Doug, thank you. In sum, my team met the challenge of delivering services during a pandemic despite a more than 70% surge in demand, but I asked for the additional personnel and the associated resources to continue delivering. My team members have been, have more than enough to be proud of, but one year of pushing themselves this hard is enough, and additional support is appropriate. The very modest ask for investment in the office is more than offset by increased revenues from both increased services and improved processes. Thank you for listening, and I invite your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ezzelberry. Any questions or comments from Council or anything further from you, Mr. Lazarus?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say that I support the Register of Wills request. It is, it is inherent upon us to challenge these requests. As Ms. Ezzelberry showed, there is revenue to offset the request. She's also a very strong advocate for her staff and for her mission, and has striven to be a leader in services and set the example throughout the counties. This is a good investment on the part of the county and is strongly supported.
I would just like to say it's, you know, we, we kind of had to throw, you know, the Register of Wills into this situation, feet first, just as the pandemic was taking hold in Delaware County, because the previous Register of Wills, Mary Walk, moved over to take over the Office of Judicial Support. And so Mrs. Ezzelberry stepped in, and what probably a lot of people don't know, because your office has been running so well, is, I mean, in the midst of all this, she had a baby and was out on maternity leave. So, but not really out on maternity leave, because I know she wasn't on leave when she was taking calls on the phone and resolving a huge number of issues. I really appreciate the work her staff has been doing, and I think there are some departments that truly do see a huge uptick when we have mortality increases like we've very much experienced as a result of COVID-19. So I thank you and your team for your service, and, you know, I do think you're exactly right. For a long time in the county, it's been do more with less, don't spend more money. But at some point, you've really got to invest in the infrastructure and you've got to invest in the people if we're going to be able to make government work like it should and as our citizens here in Delaware County deserve. So I, I, you know, I appreciate your effort, I know how much you put into this, and, you know, honestly, I trust your judgment. And I think it's important that all of us realize that there is a limit to how much we can ask of our staff over and over and over again, and at some point in time, the right answer is probably hiring more people. And I think we're certainly at that point in your office. So thank you for bringing this all to our attention, and look forward to getting the people you need.
And I'll just say briefly, since we don't have our Register of Wills with us every day at council meetings, I want to echo the thanks. This is an office, like many services of the county, that you don't think about every day, but when you need it, it really needs to deliver for you. And unfortunately, this has been a year where it's had to deliver for far more people than typical. So I want to echo the thanks that Ms. Ezzelberry has placed upon her team, and also I want to echo the thanks of my colleagues toward Ms. Ezzelberry. It's been a tough year, and it really is an office that we can all be proud of. So I think we can all support your needs to make sure that we continue in what will continue to be a tough year, to make sure you're the resources you need.
And I want to point out that in addition to that very articulate and strong request that has just been made verbally, we received a very detailed and well-done memo outlining with statistics what you just went over, and I, that is just so helpful for us to be able to take the time and really understand the issues coming into a meeting. And I understand that you probably had to put that together fairly quickly, and it was, it really did help us understand. So thank you for doing that, and to your staff who spent the last year really sacrificing personally to make sure that everything ran smoothly in the most difficult of years, we all extend our gratitude. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick technical point to Council. You may notice that the phrasing of the motion is slightly different than what was posited during yesterday's agenda meeting. The change is not substantive, it is to better reflect the adjustment that's being made through the, the from where the money is going to. And it was at the suggestion of our Budget Office, and hopefully will clarify things for Controller's Office in processing the adjustment.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Martin. Any other questions or comments from Council? I'll just add my own thanks on top of everybody else's. Appreciate all that you're doing, Ms. Ezzelberry, and please thank your staff for all of us. There are no other comments, all those in favor of Agenda Item Number Ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Eleven, motion for approval to purchase an additional 100 SAP Business Suite Limited Professional User Licenses from SAP Public Services Incorporated at the cost of $45,000 and an annual support fee of $9,900.
Second.
Thank you, and we have Mr. Bilata here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm requesting approval to purchase 100 SAP licenses. We've evaluated the current, current and future needs of county departments that are expanding, as well as the county's need to stay in compliance with our SAP license agreement. I've attached a document that outlines the current needs by department. The funds come from the IT licensing budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this request.
Thank you, Mr. Bilata. Any questions or comments from Council on this agenda item? I know we went over this in some detail, and I guess yesterday, so I guess we're all, we answered all our questions previously. There's nothing further, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Twelve, motion for approval to advertise for request for proposals to provide failover internet service to Delaware County, subject to the solicitor's approval.
Second.
And we have Mr. Bilata with us to present this item, too.
Thank you again. So currently, the government building, court system, libraries, Fair Acres, Human Services, and really all county's, county services have a legacy internet connected connection provided through the county's intermediate unit. Over the last 12 months, we've had several outages of service resulting in loss of connectivity for basic services to employees such as email, Microsoft Teams, virtual meetings, and other critical service. As we look forward to securing our environment by moving applications to the cloud, the first step is to ensure that we have basic infrastructure that is reliable and available. Key new technologies such as voice-over IP to replace our age phone systems also require a resilient internet connection that has failover capabilities to a different provider. So this request is actually for advertising an RFP for that backup service. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bilata. Anything from Council on this? For hearing none, all those in favor of the approval to advertise their request for proposals, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Bilata.
Thank you. Good evening.
Agenda Item Number Thirteen, motion for approval of agreements, contracts, and amendments with the human services providers of services as per the attached list, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have Ms. Garrison here to present this. Good evening.
Good evening. The first request I have is for permission to accept the Community Mobilization Projects for Harm Reduction Services grant, which was issued through the Regional Overdose Prevention Coalition of Vital Strategies. The amount of this grant is $48,523. This is for the distribution of Narcan. This grant was completed by Human Services in conjunction with District Attorney's Office, and it was submitted after Council's approval on behalf of the Substance Abuse and Recovery Task Force. And as we've discussed a few times, that the task force was revamped by Mr. Stolz timer when he became DA, and he had asked, I agree, to be partners in the, in co-chairing task force. The idea of the Narcan distribution is to get this life-saving medication in the hands of as many people as possible, so there's not the attached stigma, excuse me, of individuals having to come to law enforcement to receive the medication. I would like to thank Mr. Stolz timer for his efforts in this regard. I think it's very important for our community. Additionally, Mr. Voice and Mr. Stolz timer and I had met with EMS and firefighters to brainstorm about how to basket this medication out into the community, and we've talked about looking at hotels, because unfortunately, there's large overages of children, we see it from the children use side, that are in hotels with their family. So this, I'd ask permission to accept these funds for this grant. The next request I have is to accept the approved funds through the reinvestment program of $2.1 million, and this is for the transitional housing program, which leads nicely into my next request, which is to extend the current contract we have with GEO Reentry to continue to provide these services with a transitional housing program. This program is for individuals that are leaving the prison to help them, who have mental health challenges, to help them reintegrate into the community. After our discussion yesterday, I did have my staff confirm with GEO, excuse me, that this is a separate arm of the corporation that operates the prison. In addition, regardless of what happens at the prison, they are committed to continuing these services for the mental health population in the county. I'd also ask permission to submit the Treatment Needs Assessment Plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol Programming, and this is for a five-year plan for how we're going to spend the money to provide drug and alcohol, drug and alcohol services to the residents of our community. I'd also enter, ask to enter into agreement with Malvern Treatment Centers, withdrawal management, non-hospital residential treatment would be for both their centers, the one that is in Malvern and the one that's in Willow Grove, and they also offer medication treatment, as well as trauma-informed care and can address co-occurring disorders. Finally, I ask to amend the current grant with KU E H G Corp. with our All-In Research Center to add an additional site to their agreement. This is for the subsidized childcare program within the county.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Garrison? All right. Well, hearing none, then, all those in favor of Agenda Item Number Thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda Item Number Fourteen, motion for approval of the adoption of the Office of Human Services Racial Equity Statement.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Yes, Council's aware, Human Services has been working with Multicultural Community Family Services, and I do have three individuals from that program with me this evening. We have been working with this agency since the end of August. We meet twice a week, approximately three hours a week, and as I alluded to yesterday, I don't think I can adequately explain the intensity and the, the gravity of the program we've been involved, and I think it's really hard to put that in words without actually going through it. The idea is to make sure that we are being a culturally competent, inclusive department, as well as serving clients that come into our office in the same manner. So with that, and with Council's permission, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Kamara to talk a little bit more about what we've been doing over the past several months.
Please.
Thank you so much, Director Garrison. On behalf of the Multicultural Community Family Services and members of our professional development team present, Mr. Bill Kaplan, who is the coordinator, and Ms. Ladney Spotterson, who is one of our lead facilitators, we said thank you so much for this opportunity. I want to, on behalf of MCFS, say thanks to the Council, the same Delaware County Council, Delco's Executive Director, Mr. Howard Lazarus, and again, Ms. Garrison, to you and your team for this opportunity. We are really, really appreciative. We also want to say welcome, or thank you, to all of those who are watching virtually as well. We know that systemic racism is embedded in our society. It is embedded in our workplaces, and it is embedded in our institutions. We also know that systemic racism requires the proactive problem-solving of all of us to work together in providing a society, a world, a Delaware County that is fair, that is safe, that is inclusive, inclusive, and that welcomes all. The Multicultural Community Family Services is a local, community-based organization that operates out of Upper Derby in Delaware County. We'll work towards building healthy communities for all who would access our services. We do that with one primary purpose in mind, improving the lives of those who reach out to us through the services that we provide that are culturally responsive. And those services are provided in four domains, in the domains of racial equity, home health, full supporting full security, and immigrant-supported services. We were really very honored when in August, as Sandy said, a call came to us through, from Sandy and her team, with the need that they had, with their goal, with their aspirations to provide or make the Department of Human Services an inclusive and safe environment for all. When that call came, multicultural in response, and in working with Ms. Garrison and her team, brought together the approach that was collaborative and that resulted in what we know today and what, as Sandy said, has been going on since August of 2020, and known as the Unpacking Systemic Racism Project. We were contracted by, by Sandy, Ms. Garrison, and approved through County Council in August of 2021. We have worked together for over 24 weeks, and that work, which is implemented in three phases, phase one, starting at baseline, phase two, building on baseline, and phase three, maintaining baseline, concluded with phase one just last Friday. And with that conclusion, the development by Delaware Department of Human Services administrators, with the development, I'm sorry, with the racial equity statement. Mr. Kaplan, who coordinates all of this work and who serves as the lead here, I am going to now bring in to talk more about the work that resulted into the development of the racial equity statement, and for one wish we join all of DHS to And for one wish we join all of DHS to watch today, tonight, the adoption of the racial equity statement by Delaware County Council. Mr. Kaplan?
Thank you, Ms. Kamara, and to thank you for the opportunity to talk about all this great work that the Department of Human Services under the leadership of Ms. Garrison has been doing to unpack systemic racism. So good morning, good evening to everyone, to the council, and to all our municipal leaders. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about what the goals of this project are and to try to paint a picture of all the work that went into not only producing this statement, but the statement is just a reflection of the work that's yet to come. And so I'll tell you a little bit about the project and about the goals and really trying to emphasize the amount of investment and commitment and tears, real tears and emotions that went into unpacking systemic racism at the department. So I just wanted to start with what the goals are. And the first goal is really, to me, very important because it's to facilitate the department's aspiration to provide equitable and fair services for all residents of Delaware County, regardless of race, culture, and ethnicity. And that really is to work with the department to help them achieve this goal that they've already been doing. But there are a lot of barriers. There's a lot of work that needs to happen to make sure that every service, every program that is offered is equitably accessible to anyone who walks through the doors, who seeks the services. Another goal is to provide guidance and practicable strategies to reimagine equitable human service management and administration within the department. So in other words, to work within the department first. And as Ms. Kay mentioned, and I'll talk a little bit about this, when we approach race and racism, we believe that it's not solely the result of individuals and individual acts of discrimination. When we look at race and racism, we're really trying to understand an entire process that has developed over hundreds of years that is embedded in organization, culture, and structures. And I'll get to that in a minute too, because this is something that is beyond individuals. So in other words, you can't just replace people with other people and then expect that the racial practices will change easily. It's embedded in the organization. A third goal is to directly dismantle, disrupt every part of institutional racism within the department. And I'll talk a little bit about that when I bring up the racial equity plan. So what has the administration been doing for seven months? We've asked them to invest their time and their resources to understand race and racism and this process of racialization, how that plays out in the department. We've been teaching them what we're calling racial literacy skills. So these are competency skills. We believe that people, anyone, can develop the skills to have healthy racial conversations, to understand the processes of racism, and that these skills will help people look at situations in a fresh light, in a different light. So it's the development of these racial literacy skills. And that also requires people, and in this case, it's the administrators that we've been working with first, to really look at their self, their self-awareness, their identities and who they are in terms of their race and in terms of their culture. And that is always the starting work of unpacking racism. And it's to begin with the individual, but this is a project that is looking at the organization. So in that sense, we've been working with the administrators to design ways so that all the voices of all the members of the department can join together in healthy racial conversations. Some of you may have had experiences or have seen on the news conversations about race or with the protests and with the reactions that people have. Some of those conversations are needed, but they're not necessarily healthy. And so when we refer to healthy racial conversations, we're talking about working with administrators to provide support to deal with that stress, trauma, and anxiety that comes about with having these conversations. So those are the three main goals, is to work with the department to help them with their aspiration to be fair and equitable. It's to provide these strategies to look at all the management services and oversight the administration within the department. And then to rearrange it and rethink it into a more fair and equitable process. So all of this has been accomplished by the administrators in the past seven months. It's taken seven months to work through a lot of people's racial stress, racial anxieties, to learn the skills of racial literacy, to even begin to have healthy conversations amongst the administrators. It's a lot of time and it's a lot of investment. So beginning in April, soon, there will be the phase two, like Ms. Kamara was talking about. Phase two will then begin working with the administrators, excuse me, the managers and supervisors. There's about a hundred and nineteen managers and supervisors within the department. And they will go through a professional development series to learn the knowledge and the skills of race and racism and racial literacy. And then throughout till the summer, the rest of the staff, and that's probably about two hundred and seventy staff, will participate in their professional development series. That will be all of phase two. Phase three will begin after everyone has a base understanding. And that's what Ms. Kay was referring to as the baseline. Everyone has a common set of knowledge and skills to understand race and racism. Because phase three, which will begin after the summer, is to develop a racial equity plan. And that's what I was referring to about the structure and the culture of DHS itself. And in order to do the cultural change that needs to happen to make the department more racially equitable, there are areas that have been identified. And so briefly, what the plan will cover are four areas, relationships and interactions, how people social, how people interact with each other, not just informal relationships, but in informal relationships. And then there's the management and oversight aspect of the organization. There's the recruitment and hiring processes and advancement and promotion. So these are four areas that need to be included or looked at in a racial equity plan. So there's a lot more to cover in the explanation of what the Unpacking Systemic Racism program is at multicultural, but this kind of gives you an in-depth picture of what needs to happen in order to genuinely, systemically, and systematically look at racism within an organization. And this is the kind of work under the leadership of Ms. Garrison that the administrators and the soon managers and supervisors and all the direct service staff will be engaged in. The racial equity statement, behind every word, behind every phrase, is an action plan, is a set of steps that will achieve all those three points in the racial equity statement. And I wasn't, I don't know, I'm prepared to read it now, Ms. Garrison, or I didn't know if you wanted to read it?
I think, I mean, I'll defer to counsel at this point.
Okay.
Questions are for myself or you guys? I mean, just want to thank counsel and Mr. Lazarus for the support, as well as my administrative team, who has done a great job with this.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison, and I will stop there. I could talk about this all night, the wonderful work that the administrators have been doing, the work that Delaware County is leading in unpacking systemic racism. And it's very exciting work, and we very much appreciate to be part of this, and we can open it up to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan, and thank you, Ms. Kamara and Ms. Garrison. Any questions or comments from counsel?
I just want to kind of echo my words from yesterday. Just when we're thinking about equity and really trying to make those systemic changes that we know need to be done, you really do have to be purposeful in how you go about doing that. And so thank you, Mr. Kaplan and Ms. Kamara, for your support thus far and your support going forward. And thank you, Ms. Garrison, for you and your team for really taking this on because it's in your willingness to begin this work and to begin this process. Because as we start to move forward in this, you know, I hope that eventually the county will be coming behind you, but you are on the forefront of this. So thank you for your willingness to step into this.
Yeah, I second everything that Councilwoman Taylor said. And I would just like to note that, you know, the Department of Human Services deals with people who are almost by definition struggling, and especially families. And when you're talking about dealing with families and children and circumstances, you know, the data, I think it's true in Delaware County, it tends to be true across the country, is that people of color wind up disproportionately having children placed in care. And they wind up disproportionately in legal situations where a diversion program might be available or might not be available, having a harsher outcome. And, you know, you have to understand that even if it is not a really a systemic, an obvious kind of racism, lots of small decisions are made every day, especially by people who work in government with the best of intentions. And really, you know, you'd be hard pressed to sit there and say anybody is a racist. But they bring their assessment of the situation. They do not live in the shoes of the people that they're working with, and they don't have that lived experience. And so decisions get made that, over time, they're not equitable. And the best way to realize when that is happening is to understand that we all do bring that inability necessarily to see what other people are experiencing to our jobs. And I just think that the leadership in the Department of Human Services, the willingness of the staff to participate in this is, it's really inspiring to me. And I hope it will be inspiring to all of counsel. And I know, you know, we had talked about, well, gee, should we just adopt this for the whole county? And I think the reality is, is in discussing it, it became really clear that this work that Ms. Kamara's done, that Mr. Kaplan's done with DHS and the commitment of the people in DHS to do that work is what makes this mission statement for DHS possible. And so you are inspiring me. I'm sure you're inspiring the rest of counsel. And I hope many of the other people who work with us to to think about how we can bring this into our, you know, our life as public servants. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Our hearing none. All those in favor of the adoption of the Office of Human Services racial equity statement, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Bodison. Thank you, Ms. Kamara. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan, and thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number fifteen, motion for approval of a resolution twenty twenty-one dash two establishing a commercial property assessed clean energy program for the entire county, approving the sustainable energy fund as a administrator of the program and delegating certain authority to the county executive director and our chief sustainability officer.
Second.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. My name is Francine Locke. I'm the chief sustainability officer for the county. I'm pleased to be here this evening to request council's approval of a resolution to establish a property assessed clean energy or PACE program in the county of Delaware. This program supports the county's Sustainability Commission's goals and has been brought to this point by the amazing teamwork of the county's Commerce Department through Laura Goodrich Karen and the Solicitor's Office through Jonathan Lichtenstein, who are present this evening. The PACE Program Act of June twelfth, twenty eighteen, authorizes Pennsylvania counties to pass a local resolution and adopt guidelines for a commercial PACE program. CPACE is an innovative financial tool for commercial property owners to obtain low-cost, low-interest, long-term loans for clean energy and clean water projects that are repaid as property tax to benefit the community. Owners of existing or new properties zoned commercial, industrial, or agricultural are eligible for CPACE financing. CPACE can provide up to one hundred percent funding of total project cost by placing a special voluntary assessment on the property that repays the costs of the upgrades. Once a county passes a resolution, as we're trying to do this evening, the program guidelines are finalized and approved by the county. Property owners may then develop a clean energy project and secure a capital provider to finance the project. The loan payment is added to the property tax bill and collected as an assessment by the county. The main responsibility of the county is to collect CPACE assessments through the existing property tax collection process and to remit payment back to the program administrator, who will remit the payment to the various capital providers. SEF will be the program administrator for Delaware County. SEF is a nonprofit that has openly offered to act as a program administrator for any local unit of government in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. SEF provides any county or municipality opting into a uniform turnkey CPACE program administration platform that can be adopted at no cost to the county or municipality. The program administrator reviews and certifies projects that are eligible for CPACE financing. And Pennsylvania has an open market, meaning lenders can be banks, equity investors, or others. These capital providers must register with SEF if they are funding a project in a county where SEF is administering a program. Many clean energy projects may be financed through CPACE. For example, whole building insulation, geothermal heating and cooling, combined heat and power, smart building systems, state-of-the-art chillers, boilers, or furnaces, and heat recovery systems. The benefits are many, community, economic, and environmental, more resilient buildings, improved energy efficiencies, and property value may increase. At yesterday's agenda meeting, there was a question asked by council regarding the treasurer's capability to manage this initiative because they do play a role here. And Mr. Lazarus spoke to Mr. Hackett, our treasurer, and he can confirm that the treasurer is capable to support this. So I hope you will consider passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Locke. And I note that we also have Ms. Goodrich Karens and Mr. Lichtenstein. And also, I believe Ms. Edinger is with us. I'm seeing her on the screen. I am not seeing her.
She's not here tonight, though.
She was with us yesterday, though.
She was.
Anything to add, Ms. Goodrich Karens or Mr. Lichtenstein?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman, no.
I think that was a very thorough and complete description of the program.
All right, great. Any questions or comments from counsel?
Well, I would just like to add that I am absolutely thrilled that we are moving forward with this program. You know, it's a twofer. It's a two-for-one. It's an economic development program. It's also an environmental and, you know, climate change and resilience program. On the former, it is supporting our businesses in growing and investing in their own infrastructure. And as a matter of fact, we literally have a line of companies who are at the ready to get going on this. Simultaneously, it is also something that will encourage other business owners that may not have been thinking about doing this and retrofitting their buildings to make them more resilient. This will encourage them because they can get such positive financial terms. The other thing I'd like to point out is that using the Sustainable Energy Fund as our administrator, which is a nonprofit totally dedicated to this mission, is beneficial because they are active in so many of the other programs regionally, including our neighbor Montgomery County. And uniformity in this program is helpful in the corporate world that is attracted to this. It's very, it's not helpful if every county they are operating in has different roles and different administrations. So I'm really attracted to the fact that we're using a tried and true organization administrator who, you know, will keep the playing field understandable and approachable and accessible to our businesses and corporations. So thank you for persevering with. So, thank you for persevering with this and moving it forward. And I hope that we can keep the line going for all of the businesses who are ready to sign up.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Any other questions or comments from council? Our hearing on all those in favor of Agenda Item Number 15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Locke. Thank you, Ms. Goodrich-Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agenda Item Number 16, Motion for Approval to Send Out Request for Proposal for Ballot Printing and By-Mail Fulfillment for May 2021 Primary Election Subject to Solicitor's Approval.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Hagan here to present this. Good evening, ma'am. Hope you're on mute still, ma'am.
My apologies. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council, and thank you for considering my request for a proposal for the ballot printing and the by-mail fulfillment for the 2021 primary. It is our estimation that this proposal would meet the printing of all of our precinct election day ballots as well as our by-mail ballots that we anticipate to be approximately 225,000 ballots that we would be considering in this proposal.
Just out of curiosity, how does that compare to the number of votes cast in the election last year?
The by-mail ballot alone was, I believe, about 160,000 ballots. And then, we issued in the November election, I believe, for the precincts, it was well over 260, if not 300,000 ballots for the precinct.
So, we're expecting, I mean, as we normally do, see a pretty sizable drop-off in municipal elections.
Yes. And this is just for the primaries. So, the primary indeed is much less of a turnout than even a municipal general election. So, we see a much bigger drop from last year.
And this involves both the printing of the ballots and the fulfillment in the manner similar to what we did in the general election last year.
Correct. The proposal would be that not only would they print the by-mail ballots, but then they would also send those out, stuff them into the various envelopes that are required, matching the envelope and the ballot together, and sending those to the post office to reach our voters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Well, given the people on the ballot this fall, I'm sure this will be a very well-attended election. Appreciate your work on this, Ms. Hagan. All those in favor of Agenda Item Number 16, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda Item Number 17, Motion for Approval to Advertise Forbid for Sanitizing Polling Locations.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan. Appreciate you stepping in to speak on this one as well.
Certainly happy to do so. Yes, this is a request to advertise a bid for the sanitizing of polling locations for the election. And this is something that Mr. Savage has worked very diligently on in gathering that. But I'm happy to step up today and help him out and make this request to council. And it's based off of the COVID-19. In some of the precincts that we go to, the people who will be there the following days are obviously, you know, susceptible, maybe at different levels, such as schools. And we want to make sure that people are properly protected. They're kind enough to let us use these polling places, so we want to give them back in good care.
So, just to be clear, so council's aware, this is, it doesn't anticipate that every polling place is going to require this. This is for those polling places who will be using the space almost immediately following the election and need, you know, and have identified that to the county.
Yes, agreed. Is it on a need-to or requested item?
Thank you, Ms. Hagan. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of Agenda Item Number 17, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Hagan.
Thank you all. Take care.
Agenda Item Number 18, Motion for Approval of Adoption of Delaware County's Proposed 2021 Annual Action Plan and Commencement of a 30-Day Public Comment Period. Program funding includes the Federal Community Development Block Grant, Home Investments Partnerships, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs. Also included is the spending plan for the County PA Act 137 Affordable Housing Fund. Projects listed attached and subject to Solicitor's Approval.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Hill here to present this. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman and council. Tonight, I am requesting that you adopt the county's proposed Housing and Community Development Action Plan for 2021. This proposed program includes $6.8 million for public improvements, public services, and affordable housing initiatives. The process for selecting projects was quite competitive once again this year. Our requests greatly exceeded the funding available. We exceed, we received applications for more than $7.1 million in public improvements, and more than $608,000 were requested for public services. And just to summarize some of the projects that are on the attached list, $2.3 million is made available for municipal public improvements that are designed to benefit our low- and moderate-income communities. $1.4 million is going to nonprofit social service agencies for them to assist our very low, low and moderate-income residents. $1.4 million is set aside for the development or preservation of affordable housing in the county. And that's including the new Macamie Court Project, which is a new housing development in Yaden that will add 44 new safe, affordable units to the county's affordable housing stock. And then, finally, $208,000 is set aside to assist qualified low- and moderate-income home buyers who are interested in purchasing their first home. So, with your approval tonight, the proposed plan will be advertised for a 30-day public comment period. In addition, public comments are scheduled to be heard at your April 21 council meeting. And the final plan is slated to be adopted by council around May 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Any questions or comments from council?
I just like, as I did yesterday, for those who are listening, this is sort of a confusing program. And I want to just, I want to give a little bit of background about how we approach it. This is federal money that comes through the county for our communities that are designated through this program to be underserved and of need. And we get applications for public projects. And we get a lot of them from all of the townships and boroughs all over the county. We got, as Ms. Hill mentioned, over $7 million worth of requests for these public projects. And we were only, we only had over, a little bit over $2 million to invest. So, we use a very thoughtful analysis in comparing all the projects that includes things like, we look at how much each borough or township has received over the last 10 years. We look at how much they have outstanding right now in prior grants that they haven't been able to spend yet. We look at the poverty level of their particular borough or township as compared to the others. We look at the merit of the project, of course. And then, also, it needs to be eligible under the program, which has some pretty strict parameters. And we take all of those factors, and we try as hard as we can to be equitable and fair and to give this project to the place where they will make the most difference and be used expeditiously. And that is how we came up with our list and how we come up with it every year. So, I hope that explains, for anybody who's listening. Took me a year to figure it out, so.
Yeah, and I just add, I mean, what we're hearing tonight is the end of a very, very intensive process by Ms. Hill and her entire team to go through a, you know, as she said, a very long list of projects that are brought forth. We never, or we rarely, I think, have enough money to meet the demand of the projects that are, you know, very, you know, worthwhile. But at the end of the day, you know, this is a, this is a program that has been threatened at some times in the past, CDBG. And it really is, I mean, if you look down the list of these projects, it's an opportunity to really make an impact throughout our communities of Delaware County in really meaningful ways. So, it will impact a lot of people's lives, and I'm glad that we have this opportunity every year. So, thank you, Ms. Hill, for making what, as Ms. Schaefer said, can be a very complicated and confusing process, one that we can all understand.
Any other questions or comments from council? I'll just add my own thanks into Ms. Hill and her staff. I'm in my fourth year of doing this now, I guess, and I'm, I think I have about half of it. I think I understand about half of it. She gets me all the way there, and then I forget half of it every year. So, I may be all the way there now, but I really appreciate all the work that Ms. Schaefer and Dr. Taylor both did on this as well on behalf of council. So, hats off to Ms. Schaefer and Dr. Taylor for their work on this. There's nothing further? All those in favor of Agenda Item Number 19, or 18, rather, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda Item Number 19, Motion for Approval to Advertise the Attached Housing and Community Development Action Plan Amendment as it relates to the CDBG CV program to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. Funds are available through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, Public Law 116-136, subject to a five-day comment period and Solicitor's Approval.
Second.
Thank you. We'll ask Ms. Hill to present this item as well.
Thank you. My next request is to advertise an amendment to the CDBG CARE set-aside program. As you know, these are additional funds, additional CDBG funds that were made available to the county to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 virus. We've identified two projects that we think are excellent candidates for the CARES funding. So, the amendment would add two projects to the county's program. The first is to the Community Arts Center for an art outreach program for seniors to provide ceramic kits to homebound seniors. And the second is to the Entrepreneur Works Fund to provide micro and small business development services to entrepreneurs and businesses. So, the request tonight is to your approval to add these projects to our existing program. And these projects are subject to a five-day public comment period.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of Agenda Item Number 19, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you very much.
Agenda Item Number 20, Motion for Approval to Advertise for Construction Inspector for ECMS Project Number 47992 for the reconstruction of the New Road Bridge, County Bridge Number 7 in Aston Township, subject to Solicitor's Approval.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Locke here to present this. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for seeing me again. I'm requesting council's approval for the county's public works to advertise construction inspection services for the reconstruction of the New Road Bridge, County Bridge Number 7, also known as the Crogerville Bridge in Aston Township. This bridge was constructed in 1931 and is in queue for reconstruction. This request for construction inspection services will be advertised publicly in the Philadelphia Inquirer newspaper and on Delaware County's website. It will also be advertised in the PennDOT, or Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Engineer and Construction Management System, or ECMFs. A statement of interest must be submitted through PennDOT's ECMF system. And the consultants responding to the solicitation for services must be pre-qualified through PennDOT as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Locke. Any questions or concerns on Agenda Item Number 20? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda Item Number 21, Motion for Approval of CoStar's Contract 008-638 with Goldhorn Electric Construction to install electric service for Blink Car Charging Stations at Fair Acres Building Number 14 Parking Lot, Human Services Upper Darby Parking Lot, and Government Center Amber Street Parking Lot for a total amount of $159,760, subject to Solicitor's Approval.
Second.
Good evening again.
Take the way.
Thank you, sir. So, I am requesting council's approval of this CoStar contract with Goldhorn Electric Construction for the installation of three electric vehicle service and charging stations. So, as background, I would like to share that Delaware County is the first county in the region to commit to electrifying its fleet. This request supports the county Sustainability Commission's goals. The charging infrastructure is being procured through the Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program, or CoStars, as were the vehicles. There are 15 vehicles presently purchased. As you know, CoStars is a competitive process, but it is an exception to competitive bidding under the county's administrative code. Invitations were sent to four CoStar contractors. Bids were received from two. The variance between the two bids was less than 1.5%, indicating competitiveness of the offers. A significant portion of the contract is the procurement of the actual physical chargers and the supporting materials, the cost of which would be the same for all bidders. This was standard past practice when using CoStars in Delaware County. However, going forward, all invitations for bids will be processed through central purchasing. Central purchasing will work with the Requesting Department to ensure the appropriate level of competition is achieved. I hope you will consider approving this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Locke. Any questions or comments on this agenda item?
I just have one. I made a request yesterday that if council goes forward with this, that we get clarification on the budget source of this. On the Agenda action item, it wasn't clear. But if council is going to sign it by that point, can we please have that budget line item on it?
I'd like to confirm, but I'm pretty sure it's from Capital Loan 66 for motor vehicle equipment. But I would like to make sure that's correct and share that with you.
Yeah, if it's just written on the, on the materials, that will be helpful.
Okay. You're very welcome.
Mr. Chair, if I can add a comment that's related. Our controller has very justly talked about making sure that all the information is available at the time council approves items that are the expenditure of county monies. In working with the county clerk, we will start to use the Granicus program, which does require entry of the data before that item will move to the council's agenda. So, it will be built into the system so that the source of funding is clearly identified before an item comes to council.
Thank you, Mr. Lazar. And with that note, perhaps we could ask our esteemed county clerk to fill us in. When do we think Granicus is going to be up and running for us? Not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot.
That's okay. You can. I'm so excited about this, I want you to know. Because when department directors go to put agenda items on the agenda, they will not be able to put it on without the proper account numbers. It's a set thing we put in there, so we won't have to worry about this anymore, hopefully. I believe that we will be going with our Granicus system for our next meeting. Now, with that being said, it won't be fully up and working until we're all back into the council meeting and we're live again. I was waiting on the training for the council members until we're back live in the council meeting room. But as of right now, for the directors and for preparing the agenda, it will be Granicus, starting with our April 7 meeting. And the documents will be attached for your transparency portion. So, I think it's a great thing. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed and praying that it all works, which I think.
I don't want to jinx it. I want to thank you for all your work in getting this thing up and running. It's, it is really exciting.
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to make a comment because I had had a conversation with our clerk about this and our county clerk about this. And, you know, Granicus is sort of a multi-level platform that allows for a lot of things. I think it would, it's going to be part of the streaming of our meetings, et cetera. But one of, you know, I think the thing that drove us to utilize it. I knew what I was focusing on, and certainly what Ms. Coogan has alluded to, is really our ability to control the agenda and see items develop over time and to make that transparent, not just for council members, but for the public, I think, as well. So I really appreciate that. And so while we are going to be going live with Granicus, but not really live with 100% of its features, like in terms of the video of the meetings, I think the part of it that I'm most excited about, you know, the part we're talking about tonight, and you know, the ability to see items progress towards the agenda and make sure that everything is ready, that's really, that's really cool.
I know we're going a little off the rails here with this side discussion, but do we, do we know whether that Granicus is going to give us the ability to post supporting materials along with the agenda request?
Yes. When I send it to you, it will have the supporting agreements and also be posted that way. And I did test that portion out, so I'm really happy about that.
I'm overjoyed to hear that. But back to the agenda item. I just want to know, I mean, we had a pretty extensive discussion about this yesterday. I'm very glad to hear that we are going to approach it through procurement from going forward. But I am anxious, very anxious, to get this project in place and done and to get the cars that we, I think, may have even already received, ready to be charged. So I am going to support this.
I would like to add that the vehicles presently do have chargers. They can actually be plugged into a residential outlet, but that is not a very long-lasting charge. They have to be charged one day and then the next day used. So they're not going to be completely unusable at this moment, which is good to know, until this infrastructure is installed. But thank you for supporting.
Thanks.
Yeah, and further along those lines, there are blink chargers also around Delaware County as well. So I'm not suggesting that that would be the long-term solution for us, but from now until whenever we get these put in, there are other places within Delaware County to charge those cars.
Agreed.
If there's nothing further on this agenda item and no more praise for Granicus and revealing of our government geekdom, I will look for all those in favor of Agenda Item Number 21 to signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Locke.
Agenda Item Number 22, motion for approval of the Delaware County Industrial Development Authority as the county's Economic Development Authority to administer municipal grants from certain gaming revenues and to receive any uncommitted funds from such revenue at the end of each fiscal year, beginning with 2020, all pursuant to 4PA CSA 1403, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Lichtenstein is here to present this.
Yeah, thank you. This refers, this goes to the slots revenues, which are paid to Delaware County by the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue from Harrah's in Chester. 1% is applied to certain restricted grants, which can go either to the county, the city of Chester, or the municipality's contiguous to Chester to fund certain costs. Any, what shall we call it, funds that are left over at the end of the year, which are not applied to those grants, are to be paid to the Economic Development or Redevelopment Authority in the county. These have traditionally have gone to the Redevelopment Authority. However, the Redevelopment Authority has a fairly restrictive statute. You know, we had to do a lot of gymnastics to be able to use some of those funds for business grants for COVID relief this year. So by changing just to be going through the IDA, it doesn't have to change anything else about the use of the monies. It just means that if there are uncommitted funds that exist at the end of the year, they go to the IDA where there's a wider range of projects to which they can be applied. This is not going to have an immediate effect. You know, from information I've gotten from the treasurer last year, there was actually not enough revenues from slots with the shutdown of Harrah's to cover what was already in the budget. Delaware County does a grant to itself for certain expenses, such as the payments on the soccer stadium in Chester. So it doesn't have an immediate effect, but this will be a change going forward. Hopefully, the facility recovers. There's more slots revenues this year, and there'll be more grants to be made, and there's the possibility of leftover revenues at the end for the IDA.
Thank you, Ms. Lichtenstein. Any questions or comments from council?
You know, I just, I had the thought yesterday after our conversation that, you know, currently it's set up so that this 1% goes into a restricted account for grant-making, basically. And then the leftover goes into, well, what used to be the RDA now will be the IDA. Is there any reason why we couldn't just have that 1% go straight to the IDA? And then the IDA could do the dispersment for all the grants, whether it's to the county or to the union or to whatever? Is that restricted account needed?
It's written that way in the statute.
Oh, okay.
That you can't, you can only apply excess funds after the end of the year. You can't do it ahead of time.
Pesci statutes. All right. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Lichtenstein on Agenda Item Number 22? Are hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Lichtenstein.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 23, motion for approval of compensation study structure recommended by McGrath Human Resources Management with a full implementation date of June 1, 2021, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Kane here to present this item. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Chairman Zidic. And thank you for having me this evening, council and all our guests. Tonight, we are proud to present the culmination of a year's worth of work in preparing a new, never-before-had compensation system for the county of Delaware. We are very excited about this, and we'd like to share a brief 10-slide PowerPoint of the work that's been done by our group in HR since January 17. So we'd like to do a quick review of what has happened since we last met, our last episode on January 17. Like to share with you what the salary structure looks like, would you like to discuss the implementation plan, the cost of this program, the 2021 additional activities that will need to occur, and the implementation timeline. We started this project in earnest, in February of 2020, and in March, we had the beginning of the pandemic. Since that time, I was hired, Mr. Lazarus was hired, and we have worked very furiously with Ms. Nardi to prepare this program. And I'd like to, in the beginning, give a shout out to Amy Nardi for the excellent work that she has done on this. The system very clearly needed a schedule. We updated that salary schedule since we talked to you back in January. Since then, we have met with department directors on multiple occasions, addressing their concerns. We've met with also the four independent elected officials, again, addressing concerns. And we've met with the president judge and his direct reports. And during that period of time, we got feedback, incorporated the feedback with McGrath Human Resource Consultants. Again, kudos to them for the process that they've gone through. And we finalized pay grade placements. What does a pay grade placement mean? Well, this is the sample of the schedule going forward. It is a 10-step salary schedule. This is focused on the non-bargaining employees, people who are not members of a collective bargaining agreement. It shows that you have steps 1 through 10, and it creates new grades for every job here in the county. So every job was placed in this structure, and I'll talk to you about how in a second. Now you can start on a person at a beginning step, which is step one. And our goal is to get people to step seven, which is the kind of the middle of the market, of the data we received from the different counties that we surveyed. Opportunities will be to get people at step one in year one, and then move people up in the step as long as performance is acceptable. They can advance in a range based on a percentage budget each year with acceptable performance again. So a non-performer may not receive an increase, whereas a performer could get something a little different. Additional increases are stopped when the person has reached the max of the grade. If they're at step 10 and beyond, they don't see an increase in their rate because the job is basically based on that market data. And then the steps, the steps you see in front of you will be reviewed and increased annually based on CPI and going back out to the market to get data. So this will give you some of the jobs in the G and H. These are categories that are above the clerical, but below, let's say, the full professional level. Again, these are very important professionals, but in terms of the categories and what the Fair Labor Standards Act calls professional, administrative specialists. And we took the jobs and made titles that fit what the market data will give us. So we have, I believe, in the county now, 19 different administrative specialists. And those people have a little higher level than, let's say, administrative support, which we have a number of jobs in that category grade lower. And same thing with these positions that you see here. And this is just two slides or two sections of over 26 different letters that are used in the salary structure. How were these salary schedules developed? What was used? Well, we looked at four different categories. Position competencies, what a job is required to do. And those position qualities can include items such as the task responsibilities, the complexity, the problem solving, the need of supervision, the role of planning, their impact on decisions, the responsibilities of having access to confidential data, and other issues. The stress of a particular job was considered as all part of the position questionnaires, and the copies were developed from that. Then the external market has an impact, and we put definitions here for you to be able to identify as people will be looking at this for weeks on end. We want people to see what this external market mean, what the municipalities are paying for the jobs that we have. Compression happens when we bring somebody in at salary A, let's say, that $15 or $18 figure, but then we have somebody already there that's been here for three years. There maybe you need to move that person a little bit forward so you don't have them compressing against each other salary-wise. And of course, internal equity. Look at positions that have similar skill sets, and that's how they're placed in the grid. So that's really how the structure was created. And again, I will identify, this is the first time the county has had a structure like this. Talk quickly about the cost of this. To do what we want to do, we should move all non-bargaining employees who are below the current minimum to step one will cost $1.9 million. The second phase, which is to do some compression adjustments, replace remaining non-bargaining employees on a particular step, will cost approximately $300,000, and that cost will equal $2.2 million. And we will continue to work through compression issues as the year goes on and going into next year. Now, here's two samples that I'd like to show you. First sample is Public Works. You'll see the current title on the left-hand side, the department and their current grade in our SAP system, and their current alley rate. But then you'll see on the right side, the recommended title is the title we need to use to kind of identify what the job really does and to be able to get data in the marketplace. So this is why you see a contract assistant change into fiscal support assistant. We have other departments who have fiscal support assistants, senior administrative specialist from an office manager. We really were trying to be very clear that if you're not managing people, process, programming, you're really not a manager, that you may be overseeing a particular level, but manager is a particular title. Project manager, that role is being looked at as a project coordinator. And finally, the senior project manager, we're turning that into the CIP project manager. And you'll see that in this particular case, you'll see that in the fiscal assistant, the job is being fairly paid to the market right now. But in the senior administrative specialist, in the project coordinator and in the project manager, there will be an adjustment, move them up one particular step in the grade. And that'll show you what adjustments we'll make for this particular department in Public Works. Here's a larger view of the planning department. Again, current job titles on the left side and the salaries that have been paid. The right side looks at the recommended title, and again, ties that into the market. So we go to the market and go to Monaco, Chesco, Busco, Philco, Ersko, probably not the right terms, but to those counties, we'll be able to go and get data based on these new recommended titles. And you'll see in certain cases, we're going to be able to make substantial adjustments for a planning technician, for a senior planner, and in the bottom two, for the subdivision land development supervisor and the trail and open space supervisor, we can see a substantial adjustment there. And that will help us in two forms, pay people more properly and get us the ability to market ourselves better when we go to advertise positions. We may be able to see an improvement for Linda Hill in getting people to come to work at the county. This gives you a full picture of one department and what we'll be doing over the next month and a half with individual departments, showing them the current title, the recommended title, and then the adjustment in salary. Now, there are activities to go. In 2021, we need to look at making sure that we are meeting all the standards of the Fair Labor Standards Act. We need an evaluation on that. Jobs that are currently listed as salaried need to be looked at, whether they are truly salaried, whether they're really alley employees, and therefore need to be paid on an hourly basis. We want to continue to review where employees are being placed in the system and particularly making sure that they have their correct new job title. We had some questions during the meetings with both independent elected officials and the president judge about the issue of standardization of work hours. At current, the county pays on three different levels, 35 hours a week, 37 and a half hours a week, and 40 hours a week, and depends on union and non-union status. We want to take a look at that and make sure we work through that with our department heads. We are definitely going to review, refresh, and have new job descriptions in the next six months. And I mean that as a goal here today. We want to get those job descriptions updated. Some are good, some are not. We want to include that. Because that's really important for us when we go to the market, to have an accurate job description of what people are doing. And finally, a new performance appraisal system we'd like to implement. And again, we'll come back to council on this. But a way to find out what is performance, what is good performance, what is right look like, and an opportunity to have managers and employees talk. And you may think, well, that's pretty simple, isn't it? But it's not. We want to train managers to do performance evaluations well, and we want employees to feel comfortable to talk to their managers. So we'll be talking to you again about that implementation later. And certainly, we want to market, go to the market again and look at the salaries that are being paid at our regional competitors. So in terms of the implementation plan, county council approved the FY 2021 budget for 3% increase. Council approved the 1% pay increase and a 2% allowance for adjustments that would be related to the compensation study. So all non-union employees were provided that 1% increase with the effective date of January 1 and made in pay number one. And that 2% allowance of the compensation budget equates to the previously mentioned $2.2 million. So it's our goal to get started on that process right away. After we meet tonight, and hopefully seek and receive your approval of both the structure and the implementation plan, we wish to move forward and start to work with department heads one more time, with the president judge, independent officials, and all of our county department heads, approximately 60 in number, to talk about salary adjustments within their department with the other aforementioned FLSA and work hours conversations going on. Later this month, later in April, actually, we'll be talking and we'll be working with the controller's office and making sure we can build this new structure into the payroll system. And then finally, by June 1, we want to make sure that the increases are implemented and that people will get those adjustments accordingly. This is not the first, this is not the last time that we'll come to council to talk about compensation. Compensation and the structure we've provided tonight is a living, breathing organism, and it will continue to grow and develop. Salary grids will change over time, but what we want to do is be able to keep up with the market and now make this document something that will last for a long time. It'll have sustainability, and it will have purpose every year we work with, whether, you know, whether I'm here or the next HR director's here, that'll be a constant thing. And I've been proud in the past to put in compensation systems, and I'm very proud about what we've done here. So I asked council tonight to... So I asked council tonight to look at this opportunity and to let us, to allow us to go ahead and implement this process. And I'm open for your questions, please.
Well, I just want to reiterate briefly what I said yesterday, which is that, you know, and sort of the list of accomplishments for a year, this is probably not going to be the one that gets the public attention, but it really should. Because as I said yesterday, you know, the most important asset of the county and county government is our people. It's really, it's what we have. And it is incumbent upon us to be as smart as we possibly can in terms of hiring and retaining our talent. It's what our jobs are as we are elected by the taxpayer. It's to be as efficient as we really can. And so having a system in place that allows us to be smart about compensating folks with an awareness of what the market looks like and progressing people in a way that is sensible, that isn't ad hoc and seemingly erratic. And, you know, look, a lot of the words that have been used about how county employment might have looked in the past, we need to put that in the past and move forward in a way that that really, you know, is transparent to the public. And so as Jim said, a big part of this is that, you know, this will be transparent to the public. People will understand what pay structures look like and how one advances through pay structures as they advance within the county. That's what, you know, that's what the public expects and deserves with their taxpayer dollars is understanding how that goes into the payment of the workforce. So Jim, thank you again for all the work that you have done behind the scenes with the entire team through trying times. I know that, you know, everyone has an opinion on how compensation should look. And so there's been no shortage of useful constructive criticism from everyone throughout the government. But, you know, I think we've gotten to a very good place. So, so thank you, Jim.
Thank you, councilman. And just to piggyback that comment you just made about transparency, one of the goals after we have this implemented is actually to have this eventually on the county website under an HR page where people can go and see what it takes to be a financial analyst or a administrative specialist. And it will, you know, we can give those categories of experience, education, complexity, and with the breadth of it for the county, what that job does. If we can do that, we can improve not only the quality of our recruitment, but the quantity of our recruitment. And I think more importantly, we can be more transparent so that there are people that probably don't think that they could come to work at the county today. We have the ability right now to change that. And this can serve as the personnel plan going forward for us to be able to say, this is how jobs should be paid. And more importantly, we also have the opportunity to be flexible and say, we have a unique position coming in. What do we do with that? This structure gives us that flexibility. So I appreciate your comment, but I think transparency is really critical here.
Sorry, just one other thing I want to mention. You know, we've, the past year since this council has taken, you know, has been seated, there's been so much on the defense. We've had an incredibly challenging set of elections in the midst of a pandemic. We had the pandemic itself, we had cyber attacks, we had all sorts of stuff. I think this to me is one of those that, you know, we're now going on the offensive. We are putting in place the good governance that we all ran on. And so, you know, again, it's not the, it's not the sort of thing that gets a lot of attention, but it really, you know, this is, this is our going on the offensive and putting in place a great government system. So that's all I have.
I, I know this has been a crushing amount of work for you and your team and for everyone involved, all directors really. And I know this is going to be, continue to be a crushing amount of work, probably for years. But I want to say, you know, thank you, and this is so desperately needed. We are desperate for this. As I mentioned yesterday, we have more than a third of our current workforce eligible for retirement. And we have a system in place that is not attractive. It's not attractive to people coming in because it's a scatter, scattershot and under the lower rank positions are very often underpaid. So if we want to be the county that we want to be, this, this is exactly what we need to be doing, as painful as it is. I do want to just mention two things that I mentioned yesterday and you clarified for me and us. One is that this isn't set in stone. The directors will still have, you know, if we pass this tonight, the directors are still going to have a process where they can go through each and every employee and make sure that they are correctly slotted. Right?
Yes, they, we agree. We do want to use the fact that the structure has been already developed, but, you know, we can make adjustments. And I think we, we trust that we will be able to do that very effectively with each director.
Okay. And then secondly, you know, there is sort of a structural, with this system and probably any organized system like this, there is a structural dead end for each position. Because you reach the top pay grade for that set of skills. And it is possible with our workforce that people get to that dead end when they're not at retirement age, that, when, far before they're at retirement age. And along with this system, we will also be incorporating training and cross-training and encouraging employees who do get close to that dead end to start looking at other, looking at other opportunities to move up the ladder.
That's correct. And in fact, Elaine, you made a very good point there is that the training starts with a basic premise of communication and learning what people are doing and also learning what, you know, there's some people that are on this call tonight that know exactly what their people are doing. I'll call out Joanne Phillips on that. She knows exactly what everybody does in her division. She's on top of that, she's clear about that. And, you know, Howard Lazarus knows what everybody is doing in his department. That can't be said for every department head. I think the vast majority do a great job, but for our job in HR is to get them trained to learn how to listen to their employees and hear what they do. I, I'll tell you a story very quickly because we have a lot of stuff to go on the agenda with. But how people were listened to at Villanova, they got new, managers got new ideas by just having conversations with their employees and new quality improvements were developed from those performance evaluations. It's an excellent opportunity to learn from both sides. So, Mr. Lazarus?
I can jump in and to address really one of the things that councilmember Schaefer said. One of the next steps in this process is to identify career ladders. So by identifying through the job descriptions what certain titles do, we can start to link the next title up. So when you see yourself bumping up against the top of the range for that particular job, that means you've been there for a while, you know what you're doing, and you can see what else it would take to find another position. The advantages to that, as we've talked about, are movement of staff around the county government. That helps create positive environments. It breaks down some of the negativity that may exist in some places. And it provides a standardization of how we do things. So those benefits, those are benefits that come from having a skill-based structure where everyone can see what the job description they're in and what the next job description requires. And that will drive in part our training program. So I'm excited about that as we get the structure in place to really create that merit-based bureaucracy that's part of council's goals to make sure that we put things in place that will ensure in perpetuity that we have a highly motivated, highly skilled, professional bureaucracy in the county.
Mr. Zidic, if I could just make a comment, I didn't want to interrupt council from their comments. But I just wanted to say, I do, very much as someone that was dealing with Mr. Kane and Ms. Nardi, I just want to say that they really put a lot into this and I appreciate all the dialogue we had and there was a lot of dialogue. So I, I appreciate that while I still reserve all the rights of an elected official. But we worked through a lot. But I do want to say that as someone that had to actually go out and hire people at ten dollars and sixty-three cents an hour and get them to come to work for the county, it's something that I hope council will really focus as we move forward on our lower paid positions and that there's equity for those people that are, that are in the building every day through pandemics and doing their work. So I, I do appreciate the, you know, the structure, that there should be something for people to grow at the county. And I also want to just reiterate that my team, particularly payroll, will be working really closely with Mr. Kane and Ms. Nardi and the budget office to, you know, integrate this into our system. And as, you know, it's just like the register Will said, I think you all know that those people in my office that are in payroll particularly and actually accounts payable. I mean, they've put in the hours for a year through this pandemic to really meet every challenge that the county's had. So I really do want to give, you know, a hand to those people. That will be, we're going to, this is just the beginning if this is approved by council.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes, I just wanted to quickly say, echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you for, I know how much this was to go through and to put together. So thank you for you and your team doing this and it's really much needed. And I wanted to highlight what you were talking about earlier, Mr. Kane, the ability that we will have to provide more information to the community about what jobs are available at the county, what it requires in terms of skills and educational background. And I do really think that, and how much they're going to be able to be paid in those various positions will really help us to be able to recruit more from the community. I do think that that's really going to help that aspect.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Taylor. And by the way, I'd be hard pressed, and now this is one last thing. I could not have done this. This would not have been done without Amy Nardi. I just want you all to know that I'm not, I'm a front guy. I'm not, I'm not the brains. Howard knows that already. Amy Nardi spent hours and hours, hours and hours, and I just want to recognize her work. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Yes, Mr. Lazarus has told us that Ms. Nardi was in fact the brains behind this, so rest assured.
But she doesn't have the cool sunglasses, just saying.
Right.
They're not coming out tonight, Christine.
All right, any other questions or comments from council on agenda item number twenty-three? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Agenda item number twenty-four, motion for approval of professional services agreement between the County of Delaware and Tryon for Benefits Brokerage Consultancy with an effective broker of record date to be negotiated immediately with full implementation by July one, twenty twenty-one, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
All right, I hear a motion and a second, and I believe Mr. Kane will be presenting on this topic.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The county issued a request for qualifications back on September eleventh and bids were received from many vendors on October thirty-first. There were some delays in getting the bids due to the aforementioned items that Councilman Madden mentioned earlier. We received twelve bids, accepted seven for interviews, and we created a benefits brokerage selection committee with eleven county leaders around two different committees, held two days of interviews in February and narrowed that field to three final candidates. And they were interviewed last Thursday, March eleventh. And then there was follow-up and reference checking done on Friday and on Monday. And including getting feedback and rankings from all the second, the second committee. And the second committee reached a consensus over the weekend. Up until Sunday night, I was getting feedback from members of the committee. We have asked selected Tryon to represent the county going forward. Tryon is currently the broker of record for Chester and Montgomery Counties as well as many key clients around the area who are similar in scope to the County of Delaware, both in size and in dollars. They bring a wealth of mid-market experience, a number of insurance, actuarial and retiring medical subject matter experts, and the support of Marsh McLennan, a major provider of benefits and insurance products. I believe the committee is very comfortable that we'll be well-served and confident that we'll have a transparent relationship with Tryon in this area of vendor compensation. If you approve, we will begin immediately to work with Tryon to transition benefits and services in a seamless manner. I want to acknowledge the members of the Benefits Brokerage Selection Committee who participated in this process and who guided the chief personnel, HR officer in the recommendation. This included Mr. Howard Lazarus, Mr. William Martin, Ms. Dre McComas, Ms. Joanne Phillips, Ms. Elaine Schaefer, Mr. Kevin Madden, Ms. Christine Ruther, Ms. Sandy Garrison, Mr. William D'Amico, Ms. Beth Roulette, Ms. Amy Nardi, Ms. Stacy Heisey Terrell, and Mrs. Barbara Hatton, who did this before she retired and then came back exclusively to help me as we get through the number of different bids and brokers. Finally, I'd like to recognize Gallagher Benefit Services for the professional level service and expertise they have provided the County of Delaware for the last fifteen years. And time and time again, they've delivered on many programs and services for our county. In my brief time here at the county, back here at the county, I have been able to have great success in working with Christine Brown and Kristen Cotts and rarely was disappointed with their service. I thank Gallagher for their dedication to the county and for their upcoming cooperation going forward with the new vendor. I asked council this evening to consider the recommendation of Tryon as the new benefits broker for the County of Delaware.
I, I just want to say it was, I thought it was a very thorough process. And while I, I know that the people on the ground who've been working with us have been doing a great job. But I think what really excited me about some of the applicants and Tryon being one of them was the opportunity to get a lot more insight into our healthcare costs and hopefully find that can support you and your staff, Mr. Kane, as we look for ways to, you know, continue to provide our employees with a really robust set of benefits that are, you know, cost-effective for the county because they're tailored to our needs and not, you know, and we're able to sort of see where we can potentially offer cost-effective additional services that can help us reduce our, our healthcare expenditures. And I just know, like, one of the programs that you've already implemented is a diabetes education program, which is great because you're providing additional services. But, you know, I know it's evidence-based and I know that it will eventually, it will help the county save money in the long run. So I'm looking forward to seeing more of that. And I think what I saw in all seven of the benefits presentations I listened to was, you know, that certainly the broker we've selected has the tools to support us in that effort.
Yeah, and look, I think in some ways this is the other side of the coin of the prior agenda item. Once again, this is a means for council to make sure that we are being as efficient with taxpayer dollars as we possibly can to compensate. And compensation is both pay and benefits our workforce as efficiently as possible. And, you know, this is an area that, Jim, I'm not sure if you mentioned it today, but it's been a very, very long time since this had been RFP'd out. And from time to time, it's very important that you get a new set of eyes that looks at what you're doing, particularly with something that is such a huge spend as our, as our benefits. So I'm glad we are bringing this forward tonight. Once again, Jim, I appreciate the process of you and your team to bring us to what I think is a very good outcome here. And, you know, I think once again, this is going to be a place where we can, you know, with, with all respect to our incumbent who will not be going forward with us, I think this is an area where we're going to see a lot of savings and be smarter, both for the taxpayer and for our workforce.
And just for the record, I am recusing myself from, from this matter as I am involved in this industry and have had or could have business dealings with many of those who might have applied for this, for this, for this program.
Ms. Vice Chair, if I may, Mr. Kane has been very generous with praise for others, but he has been the backbone of getting us through both the previous item and this. As Councilmember Madden said, the two are As Councilmember Madden said, the two are related. Not only will we have a salary structure that promotes self-investment and advancement, but we'll also have a benefits program that contributes to a vibrant workforce, one that provides hopefully choices while at the same time being judicious in the use of county taxpayer dollars. We wouldn't be where we are without Mr. Kane's insight and his, really is just out and out guts and determination. So I want to thank him publicly as well. These are two items that have been important to council. At times, we've all been frustrated with the pace of things, but Mr. Kane was never daunted and he brought us to where we are today. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. One other thing I would like to note before we close here. In addition to this particular part of the business, there is an additional part of our insurance business, the property casualty liability and workers' comp side of our business. And that is currently under bid right now. We have bids due back in next week, and we'll be coming back to council soon for a recommendation on that portion of the business.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Are there any other questions or comments from council on the motion before us? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
And Ms. Coogan, just a note for my extension for the record, please.
And moving on to agenda item number 25, motion for approval to amend the term of professional services agreement with Mary Ann Jackson to provide services as the interim director of elections to begin January 1, 2021, instead of February 1, 2021. All other terms of the agreement remain the same, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I believe Mr. Lazarus is here to speak on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As it was stated in the, in the reading of the resolution, this applies to this item and the next. These are no cost changes, but there is a requested change in the start date. The reason for that is late in December, in talking to the Board of Elections, they shared the concern about managing the clock for the May primaries. As we all know, primary elections, while they may have lower turnout, are certainly more complex than the general election due to the number of ballots. The Board of Elections approved and recommended to council the approval of Ms. Jackson and Ms. Peroni for the next item. Unfortunately, due to the timing of the Board of Election meeting, I was not able to get this before, for council until the January 20th meeting. There was work that was done during that timeframe, which I think it's fair to compensate Ms. Jackson for. That was the intent, but the timing was a little off. And I'll close again by saying these are no cost changes to this contract and the next.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Any questions or comments for Ms. Lazarus on agenda item number 25? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number 26, a motion for approval to amend the term of professional agreement with Christina Perone to provide project management services in relation to the May primary election. Improvements to the medical examiner's facilities and operations, formation of the county health department, and other initiatives to begin January 1, 2021, instead of February 1, 2021. All other terms of the agreement remain the same, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Mr. Lazarus.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. In addition to the comments I made on the previous item, I do want to clearly state that the primary focus of Ms. Peroni's work is on the election. We added the additional elements in the event that she had capacity remaining. As of now, she is fully dedicated to the election, and I will watch that as we go forward. Council is aware of the many initiatives that are going on and also are aware of the benefits of having dedicated project managers. The best example being the project manager applied to the Granicus Program. So other than that, the same comments I made for Ms. Jackson's contract apply to Ms. Peroni's contract, and I ask for you to positively consider this amendment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
This is Joey, and I just have a comment. I just want to reiterate from yesterday that I don't think anybody should be starting work at the county until there's a signed agreement in place. So I would ask that these amendments be taken care of as soon as possible. And also, just a clarification, if, if the date is moved up, I think there is an additional cost, which is fine if that's, you know, we need that. It only will be no more cost if it ends earlier. So I think these were at a monthly rate. So if the work's needed and they did the work, I, I appreciate that, but I, I think there may be some additional cost.
If I, if I recall, it's an hourly rate, not to exceed certain amounts per month and not to exceed a total amount for the duration of the contract. So I think the point Mr. Lazarus is making is that the total cost for both of the projects, the, the not-to-exceed cost is unchanged.
If I can add one thought to that, the, the contract's envisioned five months' worth of service, and that would take us through the end of May, which hopefully would be the time we certify the May election. What is exciting is that Mr. James Allen, who is our new director of elections, will be here. He'll arrive in the area last weekend in March, on about March 27th. And during the transition, I very hope that he'll be able to perform post-election duties. So there is a lot to be excited about here. I am certainly in agreement with the controller about making sure contracts are in place and properly executed. And I am also positive that the improvements that will be made in the Department of Elections to be formed will get us out of the emergency mode when it comes to exercising our most important obligation for the public, and that's holding elections.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on agenda item number 26? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Lazarus.
Agenda item number 27, motion for approval of professional service agreement with ACD Telecom LLC to manage the design, acquisition, and implementation of a comprehensive emergency communication system for the County of Delaware at a base fee amount of $737,606.75, and an additional contingency amount of 15%, subject to the terms of the agreement, total cost not to exceed $848,247.76, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Boyce here with us for the next four items. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Tonight, I'm asking for your council's consideration of bringing on ACD Telecom of Lake Mary, Florida, to be our project manager and engineer for our ambitious radio program. As you know, Delaware County has embarked on designing and studying new emergency radio communication systems for our police, fire, and mess providers. Over that course of period, during this, last year, we advertised a bid, a national bid for project management firms, engineers with specific talents to design systems, review specifications, audit the progress of any ultimate bidder, and then give us an assurance that what we bought works and works well. Seven firms competed for that. We interviewed all of them fairly. We met with all of them. All were very competent. But at the end of the day, ACD Telecom, we believe is the best value, capable of performing the worst, dedicating themselves to us fully, and understanding our needs here in the county. The contract has been reviewed by the solicitor and executive director to ensure that we have milestones in place to manage the project. I'm Schaefer addressing, hopefully you receive the document on timeline. But our goals really would be the project manager would be responsible for developing specifications to get us to really terrific fair market bids from all the engineering firms that are possible to do this. Second, reviewing those bids along with county officials to make sure that they're, they're correct. We award the bid, then they would be responsible for making sure that the project stays on time and the engineering qualifications are met all along. And third, when we decommission the old system, they would support us. And recommend in ACD Telecom, they've done work for our neighboring counties, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We have an extensive group of stakeholders, namely our Public Safety Advisory Committee. I bought them along on this project the whole way. I have their full support in endorsing ACD Telecom along with my colleagues from other counties. So it is for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this agenda item?
Thank you for sending the timeline. That was very helpful and informative. This is a pretty colossal project, $40 million and over, and many, many years. There is one other aspect of this project management, the assignment that this group is taking that I just want to pull out and point out. And that is managing the intricacies of the very complicated grant money that we're getting. And, you know, we have gotten in our cap grant already. We are going for another one. And over the next four years while we are doing this project, I'm sure we are going to be getting more, asking for more grant money. And that grant money, especially when it's from the R cap source, is, is really hard to administer. It has a lot of specific parameters that you have to satisfy and report on throughout the entire project. And that is yet another thing that this, this company is signing on for. So God bless them. This is going to be a tough job.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Boyce? Well, appreciate you continuing to get this, get this ball rolling. I know it's, it's an important topic that we've been talking about for, for a number of years, and I'm glad to see a, a further step being taken along this path.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I think a common theme for tonight, you know, council's been at it for over almost two and a half hours, a team. This is a team of county officials from many different departments are going to be partnering in this. So I think it's really exciting, and as everything tonight, it's, it's really been a pleasure to work with everybody and see things moving forward. So thank you.
There's nothing further from council. All those in favor of agenda item number 27, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number 28, motion for approval to purchase a 70 KV three-phase generator, model DCA 70 SSIU 4F, and support equipment from Multiquip in the amount of $80,865. The generator will provide portable electric power to the modular office building and ancillary support equipment for the COVID Task Force mass vaccination sites at Delaware County Community College, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
All right, take it away, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the next three items represent significant investments in the county's ability to deliver COVID vaccinations across the county. The equipment we're going to be supporting all allows us to be flexible in where we operate and to ensure that any given time we'll be able to safely protect the residents as we deliver services and the like. I'm very proud that over the last, under executive directors' leadership in the last few months, we've really extended the capabilities in my department. This equipment that I'm going to be recommending is also valuable during disasters, which we suffer unfortunately often. And also, many of it will be supported in our elections. So while the equipment is designed primarily to be portable equipment at our mass vaccination sites, all of the equipment supports another county program. This specific device is a very large-scale generator required to operate our mobile offices that we purchased, the 70K. There are, we researched several different types of generators. We have a great deal of experience with this, and I spoke, I have team members that went to generator school, recommended it for durability, quietness, and to operate electronic equipment. This is the best value that we have, and I'd ask for your consideration of the 70,000 kilowatt generator.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Boyce?
You know, I just want to reiterate for this item and the next two, what we discussed briefly yesterday, which is, you know, the great reason to do this is to be able to stand up this mass vaccination site at Delaware County Community College, but we do not yet have the vaccine. And so, I mean, then these, the equipment that we're talking about has a great deal of utility throughout the county. It could certainly be of use in other ways and other places and potentially pop up vaccination sites or whatever if, if, if vaccine comes or with the elections and other stuff where we need it. So I think it is a really good investment, but I don't want people to see this on the agenda and think that we have the vaccine yet. You know, I know Brian Zidek, our chair, went and made himself completely a pain to various other elected officials by hounding them over getting vaccine when the president was here. And we have all been on numerous calls trying to get the vaccine here. And this, this is part of our effort to be ready for that, and it's also part of our effort to be ready to serve the county in the case of other emergencies. But stay tuned. We will tell you when we get the vaccine, and believe me, this stuff will be there. It'll be up and running. But we don't have it yet.
Thank you, Ms. Ruther. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of agenda item number 28, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number 29, motion for approval to purchase a solar-powered network camera and support equipment, model WCTBX 06A BAS, from Wanko under GSA Schedule Contract, GSO 7F 133GA, in the amount of $54,589.19 to provide safety and security to the COVID-19 Task Force mass vaccination site at the Delaware County Community College, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Again, this is a state-of-the-art piece of equipment. What these cameras allow us to do, especially in large public areas, drive up sites will allow us to add an element of security. It's a solar-powered camera. We borrow from the Commonwealth and our neighbors quite frequently these types of equipment. They really just add an element to security. Just a note, for all things the Department of Emergency Services does, we do not surveil people. We do not record people. We use these for public safety events. This state-of-the-art equipment will really enhance our capabilities.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. I know on this and the, and the previous agenda item, it specifically calls out an aspect, and I just cited the Delaware County Community College, and I know that's sort of what we've been planning for. But if we needed to go somewhere else for whatever reason, we would be able to do that as well with this equipment, would we not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I think that's one of the things that I probably should have highlighted. Just for note, when we stand up a site like Upland, the cost for the electricians to come and temporarily run something, $20,000, $30,000, it really adds up. And this equipment is all portable, trailer-mounted, so it really adds to an element to where we use it. And again, I would suggest that a number of these pieces of equipment, they're not doing vaccinations, will be at the election sites, working during those events. So we're trying to add portability and get away from some of these fixed costs to, you know, our one-time cost, and we walk away from them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council on agenda item number 29? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number 30, motion for approval to purchase four Rhino diesel generators with LED light tower with 20 KV generator, model WSP25 from Wanko under the National Cooperative Purchasing Contract for Public Safety and Firehouse Supplies and Equipment, 603-20, at a cost of $135,600. The generator and support equipment will provide portable electric lighting and power for ancillary support equipment for the COVID, the COVID Task Force mass vaccination site at Delaware County Community College, subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you. One last time, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the public's very familiar. When you go down the highway, you see portable lighting. What, what we're What, what we're looking to do here really take advantage of two things, portable LED lighting, much safer for us to operate and efficient. At the same time, this will provide generators. Again, we have many sites that we operate around the county. Some go into dark. So this is one piece of equipment that can serve both. All the units, again, are portable, trailer-mounted, so they'll be able to serve in a number of functions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Boyce on agenda item number thirty? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agenda item number thirty-one, motion for approval of a motion to waive annual assessment appeal fees for twenty twenty-two county real estate assessment appeals. Subject to solicitor's approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. You want to take us through this one?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this request comes from the Board of Assessment Appeals, and it relates to twenty twenty-two real estate tax appeals. And the basis for the request is that this coming cycle will be the first appeal cycle following taxpayers' receipt of tax bills, which may have been changed as a result of the countywide tax reassessment. The Board of Assessment Appeals anticipates that there may be an increase in volume of appeals and that taxpayers would appreciate an accommodation during this time of COVID and during a time when some of them may be wrestling with the implications of the countywide reassessment. What is requested here, this comes before you now because we are now at the point where the board will be printing the applications for reassessment appeals, and they would like to indicate that there is no appeal fee if they receive the authority in this board to waive the fifty-dollar fee, which would otherwise exist. Depending upon the number of appeals that would be forthcoming in the upcoming cycle, the amount of waived fee that the county would otherwise receive would be in the range of twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I would just like to say that, you know, one of the, when you do a countywide reassessment like this, as we discussed yesterday, the county can test the work of the reassessor, in this case Tyler Technologies, and we are doing that. The, the county has hired a, an expert to do a review, a statistical review of the certification that Tyler gave us, that they met their contractual standard for uniformity under the, under the contract. But even if it meets that standard on a countywide basis, you know, you know, there's always going to be properties that aren't right. You know, they're, they're going to be individual properties that aren't right. And the way that gets fixed is through appeals. Sometimes they're too high, sometimes they're too low. And I think the knowledge is, is people who may not have appealed the last cycle because they didn't know how it was going to affect their taxes, or they thought maybe the number was right, and then they see that they're so much higher than all their neighbors who have comparably priced homes, they are going to turn out and, and appeal this time. And since one of the goals is to make sure we get this reassessment right, I don't think we should be discouraging people at a time when money is tight and we're talking about the people who are getting hit by these taxes from filing and helping us make sure that the roles aren't just correct, you know, on a sort of statistical basis across the county. But, you know, that those small shifts, that those small errors or those properties that may be off due to later obtained information are brought into line for uniformity purposes. We want to encourage that. So I think in this year in particular, it's an important thing to do. And I support this request.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Anything further from council? Hearing on all those in favor of agenda item number thirty-one, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number thirty-two, motion for approval to appoint the following individuals to the Children and Youth Services Advisory Committee. Samantha L. Newell for a term ending October twenty twenty-one and Kiana Anderson, October, term ending October twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone on council care to speak to these? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number thirty-three, motion for approval to appoint Gwen Meltzer to the Delaware County Housing Authority to a term ending January twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I'll just reiterate what I said yesterday. Ms. Meltzer is being appointed to the seat on the Delaware County Housing Authority Board that must be occupied by a current tenant or recipient of services from the Delaware County Housing Authority. We got a lot of great resumes from people willing to serve on the housing authority. But she was one of the few people who met the service recipient requirement. So I'm, I'm very glad she applied and happy to see her, you know, in this motion tonight.
Thank you. All those in favor of agenda item number thirty-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it.
Agenda item number thirty-four, motion for approval to appoint the following individuals to the Economic Development Oversight Board to a term ending March thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Jamal Johnson, Anthony Lucy, and Elaine P. Schaefer as the county representative, council representative.
Thank you. Any, we got a second from Ms. Ruth. Any questions or comments from council on agenda item number thirty-four?
I would like to thank the two outgoing members, Paul Mullen and Russ Carlson, for their service and their engagement with this board. I'd also like to say that this board is, has a whole new energy and a whole new perspective. And we look forward to getting these two new board members on with even more new perspective. It's, it has, this board has a great task ahead of it in, in our re-envisioning of the economic development efforts of this county. I think that this board now, as it consists, is consisted, consists of a lot of new people, is energized and up to the task. So I appreciate your support and I look forward to serving with all of these new people.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. There's nothing further. All those in favor of agenda item number thirty-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask a, a question of clarification? So these are all to a term ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Is that right? Because Ms. Schaefer, on the version of the agenda that I'm looking at, it says March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I, I put March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one because it was council, it was council's desire to make sure that we only did one-year terms because if a council member left, then it would give a chance to someone else.
Okay, should it, should it be March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, though, at this point?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
March twenty twenty-two. My apologies.
Didn't want to have to do it again next month. That's all.
I appreciate that. Just, let's, let's, let's roll back the, roll back the clock here that little bit. Ms., or Dr. Taylor, is your motion then for Mr. Johnson and Mr. Lucy to term ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and Ms. Schaefer's to a term ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, do we have a second for that motion?
I will second it.
All right, let's vote again then. All those in favor then of this newly clarified motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I, I did try to say something earlier, but I was on mute, so I apologize.
I'm glad you caught it. Thank you.
Agenda item number thirty-five, motion for approval to appoint the following individuals to the SEPTA Citizens Advisory Board, both terms ending February twenty twenty-three, Al Ackert and Damian Christopher Warsavage.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on agenda item number thirty-five?
Just the same comment we made yesterday, which is that we actually have three seats. Delaware County Council has three seats to appoint to the SEPTA Citizen Advisory Board. So we still have one open site, which I believe Ms. Coogan is keeping up and posted. This board is for people who regularly ride SEPTA. For example, a, a person who commutes regularly, lives in the county, and might use the regional rail could be a candidate for this. And while it is not a paid position, the board members, the advisory board members do receive a free transit pass.
Thanks, Ms. Ruth. I don't think we voted on this yet, have we? The hour is late. My brain is fried. Sorry. All those in favor of agenda item number thirty-five, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Agenda item number thirty-six, motion for approval of the request by the Controller's Office for Payment of Current Bills.
Second.
Thank you. Anything of note, Ms. Phillips?
Um, no, it's, the only thing I would note is that Mr. Lazarus and I have been in discussions and as we, a year into the pandemic, I think we're both in agreement that we will be moving out of, you know, emergency mode of some purchases. And that in that regard, there'll be some contracts that should be coming to council for RFPs approval. So we're looking forward to that.
Well, good. That'll make our meetings a little longer, so that's helpful. But, but that's,
It's up to you.
Well, such is the, such is the price for good government, and I appreciate that. That is the right thing to do. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next item, we look for communications from our executive director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to thank the Controller for the setup. I'd like to apologize in advance for the coming meetings, which will also be longer. I'd like to, but I won't because there are many items coming forward that council planted the seeds and they're starting to bear fruit. Those will include some discussions of the deprivatization, County Health Department, Medical Examiner's Office changes to the CIP, to twenty-two, twenty-one budget, all of which, as Mr. Boyce said, are great examples of the teamwork that's generated by the support we get from council. Ms. Coogan also poked me a little bit to make sure that her appreciation for the IT team as it relates to the Granicus implementation does not go unstated. Earlier today, I sent a memo outlining the current and estimated costs associated with the Wellness Center in Yaden. That speaks towards the transparency that Ms. Phillips always encourages us to do. And I tried to get a memo to you also about where we are on our capacity and throughput and issues related to the vaccination program. But as we know, that's a very fluid situation right now because of the supply of a vaccine, but I will strive to get that to you shortly. So I thank you very much for your attention to these matters this evening and look forward to fruition of many others in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Any questions for our executive director? All right. Next item, I guess, is solicitor's report.
Two items, Mr. Chair. First, I would seek a motion to approve the filing of two petitions for the termination of parental rights and one consent for adoption with the Urals Court.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on these matters? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. The second item is a quick update on the rental assistance program. Work continues on a daily basis, both with the county team and Capitol Resources, our consultant. Two points, several points of information for the public. There is a website, delco-era.com, which is active at this point and is a location where both tenants and landlords can go to pre-register their interest in participating in the program. There is a phone number, which I will read to you, but it will not be operator manned until Tuesday, March twenty-third. That number is four eight four seven two nine forty-two hundred. Next week, the public can expect press releases about this program. The website will receive significantly deeper content. Currently, the website provides for just pre-registration where a landlord or a tenant would leave their information, knowing that someone will call them back next week or the week after. Next week, there will be more substantive information on the website. The program continues to anticipate opening for enrollment April first, twenty twenty-one. That will be the date when tenants and landlords can go and begin to register. To the extent people are following this, people are very anxious to be involved. We've gotten many, many inquiries, both here at the Government Center, at Health and Human Services, at other offices in the county. People should be aware that in terms of facilitating their participation, one thing they can do is file their twenty twenty federal tax return. Because part of the program involves an income verification step because you need to be below eighty percent of adjusted median income to be qualified. And as our consultants have pointed out, filed tax returns are the gold standard for income verification. So while there may be some benefits of filing in connection with securing some, some of the incentives that were recently passed by Congress, if you want to participate in this program, if you file your tax return and are in a position to download that on April first, it will allow for quicker funding of an application. Related to that is having handy and executed lease document. Sometimes people may have to go and look a little bit to find their leases, or maybe they have a lease, but it was never fully executed. And if people are monitoring the circumstance, the next ten days might be a great time, A, to find your lease, and B, make sure it's fully executed by both the landlord and the tenant. And then finally, this program will also help fund past due utility bills. And it will fund the largest past due utility bill for any particular applicant. So again, folks may want to do a little bit of research, go find that most recent largest past due utility bill so they will have it available for input into the system. Again, this will be a system which while it will encourage and allow for online applications and processing, will also allow for in-person applications and processing. And the locations and schedules of those in-person processing efforts will be part of the public relation efforts that roll out next week. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions for Mr. Martin? All right. I think the next agenda item calls for a public comment. Ms. Ruth, or do we have any comments to be read into the record?
Yes, we have at least one. Let me pull it up. And it is only one. I, I must say, this is a very good argument for continuing to have meetings on holidays where people have better things to do than watch us on county council meetings. Just saying. From Kelly Diaz, one 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 nine Morton Avenue, Folsom, PA. The search for a permanent treasurer using in-house personnel and an executive recruiting firm has me thinking. Why does Delaware County, unlike our neighbors in Chester, Montgomery, and other Pennsylvania counties, not elect our county treasurer? Currently, the treasurer reports to and falls under the oversight of county council. In the pursuit of creating a more accountable and transparent government in Delaware County, I can't imagine a more beneficial move than having an elected treasurer chosen by our voters who answers directly to residents. I understand this would be a drastic change in government, requiring a proposed change to the charter, followed by a referendum question on the ballot. Such a major transformation would not happen for several years, if at all. But I encourage this council and anyone listening to consider it. That's, that's right. I mean, right now, one of the things that can be done by a home world county is, in its home world charter, is to make certain of the row offices not elected offices, but appointed offices. That was done with Delaware County's Home World Charter and absent an amendment to that Home World Charter, it will remain an appointed office.
Thank you, Ms. Ruthur.
That's it. That's all we got.
All right. Thank you. The next Agenda Item calls for council comments. Ms. Ruthur, do you have anything to add?
In, in view of the hour, I do not.
All right. Ms. Schaefer, anything from you this evening?
I don't have anything official. I just want to share some, a personal note. I know it's late. I'm feeling so energized after this meeting because so many things that we had wanted to put in motion when we all, you know, put our names in to do this, are starting to happen. And tonight's, tonight's meeting, we started to see it. There's so much happening. All of our initiatives are now taking root. The compensation study, the nine one one centers moving forward, our health benefits, electrifying our fleet. We talked a little bit about the, the Health Department, the de-privatization. It's all finally happening. You know, we've had a really tough year of dealing with absolute calamity. And I just, I, I'm so excited and energized that we are finally getting to make some progress and moving forward on our, on our initiatives. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Mr. Madden?
I share Elaine's enthusiasm and I would celebrate with an Irish jig for all of you in the public at home. But the hour is indeed late and the Guinness awaits in the refrigerator. So I will just bid you all a happy St. Patrick's Day and we'll see you in April.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I'm mentioning.
Thank you. Just, just briefly for me, there was a topic that was raised yesterday and one that I just wanted to make sure is on people's radar. And that has to do with the Covanta incinerator. There's a contract that is due, that we think would be due up in relatively short order. And it's, it's a contract that is entered into not by Delaware County Council, but by the Solid Waste Authority. So there apparently is going to be a public meeting. Ms. Ruthur made note of it yesterday. We didn't have a date or a time for the public meeting that the Solid Waste Authority is having with regard to that incinerator. But if it is a topic that is of interest to you, we encourage you to keep an eye out for that public meeting. I think when, whenever we find out when it is, we will make folks aware of it, whether you're in favor of the incinerator or opposed to it. If it is a topic that's of concern to you, we encourage residents to, to become involved with that. So if there is nothing further, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all. Good night.